differently than the kind of towns may be. So that was one question. But the other question had to do with signage. I know we've previously talked about signage. One of my remaining concerns is the fact that we've kind of branded ourselves as being the hospitality hub. And so, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is the fact that tourists get off at those three exits and they come and they visit our downtown square. So, given the fact that that would no longer be possible with the barrier walls, has there been any more consideration of things that might take place so that we can continue to represent those who have chosen to do business as business owners in our square? Because we haven't, we, there's no forecasting on how this might impact them. And there hasn't even been any forecasting in terms of how many people they may lose. And so, all of this is conjecture, but it is a valid concern. So, I'm just wondering what we're doing proactively around that issue.
So, included in the project are, there are blue informational signs and they will be at the entrances, prior to the entrances of the management lanes. And now, we'll just basically say next services in the 12 miles. And that's the industry standard. The existing logo signs for the general purpose lanes are, those will remain as is. So, if, the purpose is that if someone wants to stop and wants to get off, they will know that they need to stay in the general purpose lanes. That if they get into managed lanes, they won't get out until north of the system.
And I'm sorry, I feel, I just, this is so uncomfortable for me, but I just want to make sure that we are represented. Because when we had the initial conversations, we talked about the fact that the industry standard wouldn't necessarily work for McDonough because our entrances into our city are on the I-75 corridor. So, we talked during some of those meetings about the possibility of creates creatively utilizing other services, maybe other grants that might erect different types of signs. I just don't want that conversation to drop off because it is so much a part of sustainability for us. You know, I know everybody's focused on the need to get traffic through, but we're also trying to get folks in. And when people historically might stop at the gas station, and I always say Mountain Dew because I love Mountain Dew, but where they might just stop and pick up a Mountain Dew and talk to somebody and they say, hey, why don't you go visit our squares like 4.5 miles, you know, from this location? If they're not getting off, that won't happen and we don't know how great those numbers are. So, I know GDOT is basically confined to industry standards, but I remember one of the gentlemen who was with you indicated that there might be some other programs that are related to GDOT that might be able to help with gateway entrances and things of that nature. So, I just, I just don't want that to drop. And that, that kind of also segues into the issue of whether or not we've been able to come up with a tree mitigation plan. You know, we were concerned about, and I'll use councilperson's terminology, looking like a concrete jungle. That's not McDonough, that's not what we want to look like. And so, I just wonder if we've gone further with the development of those types of things.
As far as the signage goes and like gateway grants and things like that, we had done a little bit of outreach. We will continue to do that outreach with the city of McDonough and try to set something up. Because there are several things that we'd love to share with you guys that-
Because you guys know more than we do.
Right, that, that will help you take care of the city. So, for sure. As far as the trees go, first of all, I can tell you contractor's not going to cut down trees if they don't have to because that's additional money. But we have been working with EPD and with the contractor to minimize the amount of trees that are going to be removed as part of drainage and just as part of regular normal construction activities. So, I'm actually, I'm real excited about it because we got some things squared away with some of our mental permitting that will allow some of those trees and-
As a result of the conversation with you guys and we showed you back.
Landscaping at 2081 that will remain, so I'm real excited about that.
I appreciate that because I remember when we were in our housing, one of the things that was often said is that it's more costly for developers to cut down trees than it is for them to save them. But they would always say on the back end, the clear cutting was the best route. So, you know, it was easier to take them all down than it was to save the one. So, just kind of keep an eye out.
There was also the sound issue that we had talked about, the type of sound barriers, and whether or not you were going to do the lattice work that's falling apart just north of us or not, as you, in Clayton County where the slats and things were, you know, and they were easily damaged or seemed to just fall apart. And you had said that you would do something about, that y'all were going to use a different system as you approached down here, yet I've seen some of the slap work continue. And we've not had, we've not been, no one's come back to us and talked to us about anything that we are now saying at this table. No one's, that I'm aware of, has contacted anybody at the city or written us a letter or brought us up to date or said that they're pursuing any of these things. We have conversations and that seems to be the end of it. And we really do, you know, appreciate anything that you're doing, but if you are doing things and we don't know about it, you know, it leaves us feeling as though we are not being looked after. And the, also, while you're here, please take this message back. We have tremendous amount of trash on I-75 and trying to pull off in the off lanes. We have so much tire trash and other things. I mean, it's just hazardous if you had to try to pull off either against the, you know, the inner lane or the outer lane. And I realize lanes are limited, but no matter where you ride, coming this way, there's just tremendous amount of trash on both sides.
Okay. Anybody else?
So, I can ask you, Mr. Stoney-
I want to give you a chance for the chair of the party.
On the sound walls, there was two public meetings held, it's probably been two months ago, on the sound walls, and they invited folks who were adversely impacted right next to the interstate. And actually, it showed the examples of the sound walls, and they are different than the ones that you're talking about now. I don't, I don't know what you're specifically looking for, but they have examples of those that we could, that I'm sure GDOT could bring to you. But we, we had, nobody showed up to the public meetings. They did give the vote through the mail or they could call in. So, there were a way to get public input, but we were there, I think it was at Eagles Landing Middle and then at 2081. And I just went to answer the questions that came up and it was not, you know, wasn't my proportion to be there.
And why was, why are we not included in that information? We keep asking. You bypassed us when you started these lanes. You did nothing to contact the city and involve us. Once things happened out at Mount Zion, you went right on doing something that totally impacted the city and made no effort then and it continues. You know, and that, and that's just another example. 2081, you have it there and nobody in the city is aware.
Those meetings were specifically for the property owners that are along I-75. So, I think, you know, it was very specific to them to get their input on the kind of sound wall. But I mean, I understand your point and we've talked about it before, and I think there's a very standard process that GDOT goes through when they're doing those meetings. But anyway, I just want to let you know, it is, it is a different surface than what is up on I-75 in Clayton County.
And while I appreciate it, it's the property owner, it is this community that has to live with those decisions. And the people that represent this community need an opportunity to participate. And I don't know how else to say it, you know. In fact, I can't even be nice about it anymore, you know. So, thank you.
Bert, thank you so much. Ladies, and I see we got a friend of ours locally here that just came in, Ms. Dana Lemon on the board of DOT. Dana, welcome you. And of course, I hadn't had, you and Ms. Leon Jackson any kind of chance to say anything. And Leon kind of came up front to provide this information. Leon, do you have any comments that you might like to share in conjunction with these managed lanes? It's a tremendous project.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Mayor. We appreciate being able to come back to you. And the concerns that have been raised, I think we, I'm documenting everything that's being said, first of all, so that you know, and all the questions being raised and who might be the person that responds to you appropriately. And again, I guess just to echo Bert's comments about the sound walls is the federal, and it's hard to kind of get your mind around, I know, but there are federal regulations that kind of guide how we reach out to the impacted audiences for sound walls, for their look, for their height, for their width, for where they'll be located. And so, those specific people, buildings, businesses were contacted as part of that federal legal regulation, and they got invitations to appear at those public meetings or, and/or to send in their comment about where they think noise walls should be located, what they should look like, how deep they are, how big they are. And so, that's why perhaps, although you may have seen a press release in the local newspaper about it, the direct, the direct communication goes to the impacted businesses and residents in that area. And that's helpful.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask Bert a question, and it is good to see you again. I have to echo councilperson's not his concern because the majority of the individuals that are along that corridor are businesses. I am approximately 2.5 miles from the interstate. I can stand outside my house 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, on up until sunrise, and I can hear the cars. And so, the residents which might be impacted by the types of walls, the locations, the aesthetics, et cetera, would not be able to come in. And I do understand federal guidelines, but I think one of the things that we're trying to do as a city and as a county as well is to try and create an element of being customer friendly. And so, the regs might not support it, but at the same time, we can take a less stringent approach in making sure that the citizens know. That's, that's one thing. So, I guess in hindsight, if it's possible to send that information to our community development mayor, city administrator, just so we could at least take a look at what has been decided. And if there is any opportunity for public comment via the internet, let us know that because it, trust me, at the end of the day, when the whips come out, we're the whipping post. They're looking at us. They can't get to Washington, they're coming to us. And so, the other thing too, and I know this is something that probably isn't possible, but it's just kind of a concern that always lurks in the back of my mind relative to the whole issue of dynamic pricing. Are there any provisions for individuals who, and I think I already know the answer, I just need to say it out loud, but low-income individuals or senior citizens? You know, I'm very concerned about the fact that our seniors continue to pay into a system where they don't get a whole lot of benefit. So, I don't know if that's been a part of the discussion, but-
Yeah, so thanks to that question. So, we, we had a couple of programs, one that we have already implemented and one that we are exploring right now. The first thing is, we get a lot of what they call unbanked, underbanked. They don't even have, either don't have bank accounts or they don't, don't have a full bank account with debit cards and credit cards and those kind of things. So, and if you go into a Walgreens or a CVS, you will see a peach pass available there on the gift card rack. And so, you can now pay cash to get a peach pass and to reload that account. You don't have to have a credit card or, or a debit card to do that. So, that's meant to get to, to those folks who, who just don't, since some people don't want to give their credit card over, they're leery of that transaction and now they'd rather, they're just cash preferred. So, so we've done that, that's now available in statewide in all CVSs. Right now, it's just on 85 corridor in Walgreens, but those will be statewide by the time this, this project comes online. So, that's one thing we've done. The second thing we're doing is exploring what we're calling a commuter credit program where if you take the bus, for example, you would earn a credit towards, in your toll account that you would be able to, if you, if you were late one day and needed to drive, instead of taking a bus, that you would be able to accumulate credits and then, and then be able to use the toll lane. And so, we are writing throes of that now. To be honest with you, 85 project is so busy, there's so many cars that use it, that we really giving away free trips. It was counterintuitive because, you know, it's going to fill lane up that much more. It's too congested already. But we think for this project and then Northwest Quarter Project, we really think that would be a great option for those who'd like to say, you know, rely on transit, as Mr. Stoney said, and then also have a way to earn their way to get into, into the lanes. And the other thing that does too, that I really like personally, is inexpensive on the front end of the rush hour and on the back end of the rush hour. And so, it really incentivizes people to come in early or to come in like, if they can, some people can't obviously, but they could actually modify their schedule and get a cheaper ride in rather than riding really during that peak hour. And that's the thing we've seen on 85, the rush hour is starting to flatten out a little bit. Instead of having such a high peak right in the middle of the peak hour, people are coming early or they're coming through later, both in the morning and afternoon, and taking advantage of that lower price. So, they're getting incentive by, if they're able to, to modify their behavior. So, that's the other thing that we're seeing there. But the commuter credit program is a little early. Now, we don't really have that in place yet, but we're certainly working on that with an idea of having it ready by the time this project opens in January 2017.
And it, it might be a good idea to add some of that information to Georgia rides, you know, because a lot of times, businesses, other governmental entities that have a lot of employees watch that site, but they won't necessarily get that information and utilize it to maybe modify some folks' schedules.
I think that's, that's a great point. Yeah, thank you.
And Mayor, on a very positive note, I was at a doctor's in Atlanta at P. Bond, and they said, when are you going to get those managed lanes? We can't wait, you know. It takes us forever to try to leave the city, trying to go to the end of the beaches, like having to plan two extra days vacation to get out of the city or to get back into the city. And I hear it all the time when I'm in Atlanta, when are you getting the managed lanes? We can't wait to buy, you know, a ticket through. So, you know, there's a lot of people that are really excited about it, you know, when they're leaving for vacation or traveling, you know, to Macon or the, south of Atlanta. So, that's good.
Ms. Barrett, do you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you so much for having me.
Always a light and happy folks. And Albert, Ms. Jackson, she was always a good woman. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Dana, do you have any comments? Always good to see you. Thank you. All right. Okay. Lady? Yes, sir. Come have a seat. Thank you for being here and having us sit.
I can keep this phone on, come on.
Yeah, well, I mean, sure. He's in on the table. That's right. I get some good calls at that. How about? Thanks, bud. Thank you.
I was asked to bring you all up on SLOSS 4 and, and the progress that the city has made concerning getting close to a figure that we will ask to be included in the county's first bond issue. The city has come up with a document that shows it's about $17 million that you would like to receive in this first bond issue. We have run the figures. We had a conference with the city attorney and city manager, and we ran all this by Bill Camp, the finance director on this project. And Bill has assured us that this proposal is within budget and that the items listed are within the criteria of what was voted upon. And I would like to add a couple of things to this. You need to, to understand that, that this is an estimate of what you would like to do. You could add to it, you still have some room if you wish, but when you're dealing with parks and recreation as an example, I think it's best that y'all figure about what the capital improvements are going to be and not specifically what the improvement's going to be. And that's, that's our recommendation there. Once you get your funds, then of course, you can tie it down as to which directions you're going. Because a lot of times, these projects are ever-changing based upon need. Of course, your public safety items there, we're just asking for public safety, but as an example, we got 624 for radio. It may be that you have a wrecked car between the time you get your money and you may want to use that to replenish your cars, just as an example. And then you've screened improvements, you've made those comments there and your desires to make the improvements. But again, you may have something unforeseen that you need to move the money around of. I'll be glad to answer any questions you got, but staff's done a good job in getting this put together and it does meet the criteria, which is what we were concerned about and make sure that we, we were getting something that we could pay for.
But it, you know, it's nice to see-
I do.
How you doing? You said we may have a little extra to play around with. Do you know if, around a lot, but it's been, how much?
What, what we've always done is that we've never got too far out on the limb. We try to stay conservative where we would know absolutely, for absolute fact that we were going to get enough sales tax money to make our payments. Now, the way this thing is set up is that we're going through the county because the county's bond rating is, is good. And that saves us interest as we go through it, okay? It saves us cost. The more we, the more we get upfront, the lesser the cost is for borrowing money or paying the money. But what happens is, is that all of the, once you issue those bonds, starting the next month, all of the sales tax has to be used for the payment of the bonds. So, if we have too much money borrowed, it delays us from getting any money later in the year. A city like Hampton, who is not planning on borrowing money, they plan on doing theirs piecemeal, they're going to have to wait until the bond payment is made and then they, the next month, they'll give a lump sum to bring them back courage, you said. But I really think the county's going to have to go back at least one more time and probably two more times to get the funds that are needed. So, I think we'll have some more ability to get the funds to build other projects. The other thing that you don't want to do is you don't get it, want to get into arbitrage because you want to be able to borrow the money and build a project and build it within the time to specify. Because if you don't, then you got to start paying a penalty, which is money out of your pocket. So, we try to stay conservative, we try to get enough money to build projects that we think we can build by the time the county is ready to issue additional bonds. Yeah, go ahead.
So, we're expecting to get those bond payments in around October-ish or?
We hope that they will float the bonds in October and we'll get the money in November. Now, the bond validation has already occurred. We've already gone through all the legal proceedings, it's just a question of the county and the city telling the bond people, we are ready to go to the market. And then, they make a decision, do we go to the public market and sell them on the public sale or do we go to a private placement? And they do that based upon what is the best return on the investment for the county and for the city.
You have comments?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, okay, I'm just asking. When we issued or at least when we approved our bond list, we approved it categorically. We've got parking, improvements, public safety, et cetera. But was there any opportunity, given all of the recent conversations about the public safety building, was there any opportunity in the manner that we approved our SLOSS 4 list to add our public safety building into our bonding?
Probably so under your public safety. I think it would fit under that, but I would need to see, one, how much money you're talking about and how quickly that could be put out for bid. As an example, Locust Grove started over a year ago putting theirs together and they are going to do what is known as a, a man, a contract management job whereby the contractor is really their agent to, to build it for them. And, and they have not finalized their plans yet. So, it's, if y'all have got your, your plans put together and you've done your pricing on it, then, then it's a question of whether or not it will fit into the borrowing policy.
Part B to that, I'm sorry, just real quick, part B to that question. I know we're conservative, how conservative are we? How much more room do we have to move?
I did not ask, I did not ask Mr. Camp to tell us that, but I can find out and let you know.
Yeah.
I can say, we can't carry it forward, can we?
Wait, the municipal court complex, the police and public safety complex was a SLOSS 3 project. So, that's part of the reason why we have everything prepared and ready to go. And so, and we began that project with SLOSS 3 funds. We use bond funds to acquire property, both for the public safety building, municipal police building, and also for the municipal court complex. But yet, we have not been able to begin construction of the, but, you know, our understanding has been we can't carry over the SLOSS project from year to year, haven't really been able to find a good way to split it up into phases. And so, that is why we did not, up until this point, really talked about it being a SLOSS 4 project.
Bill, this is Bodie, I'm in, this is the city of McDonough. I've got a question for you concerning the maximum amount that the city can take down in the first bond issue and still be comfortable being able to pay it back. How about checking on that, let me know if you can. If you have to wait till end of August, I'll be back to the city. Thanks.
And I guess the other question, and of course, this has not been discussed, and I'm just asking because you're here, if there is possibility and the, the legal issue or technicality becomes the fact that it started in SLOSS 3, can the activation be phase one and the construction, phase two?
Yes, but I would need to see what was set up in 3 to see what you can carry over into 4 before I tell you absolutely.
I understand.
But if you can just tell, you know, I don't have, you will pull that and we'll just talk about it tomorrow.
Why don't I pull you the file on that? We looked at that back in 2012. Bill, Bill actually looked at that with us, Bill and, and we looked at that pretty exhaustedly.
We'll get you that, so. And Lee, have you already acquired your property?
Yes, sir, we have.
With SLOSS 3. Did we do design with that money too?
We did.
Of course. Do we have any left over?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do we have any money left over?
We do.
For 3?
We do.
Do we still have projects that we were not able to complete on 3?
All right. All right, Lee, we've been having a conversation, figuring it out with the county yesterday and had four or five things there, one of which is the Hope Channel. It is not something that we have considered. And I had told you that I feel like now within this timeframe, whatever is it, 36 months, the chairman wants to copy about appraisal. It was in, Adam gave it to me earlier this week, and he was interested in it and we talked about, he'd like to move forward with this with the county commissioners and of course, we got this asbestos thing that we talked about. And of course, we got this asbestos thing that we talked about, Craig and I talked about. That's something that if we have an opportunity to modify this, to take care of that. But I believe we can move forward with that. He's ready to go. He wants to bring that to the commissioners, I called out in the late Saturday, get a copy of the appraisal. Give them, I've got the exact amount. But the asbestos is half of what I initially thought it was gonna be. Somewhere maybe a fifty thousand. But I'm just wondering, is, is this the last opportunity for us to? It is not.
It is not.
Okay.
And Mayor, I just wanna publicly raise an objection because I've been involved in that project for about three years now. And to know that we've gotten this far, including speaking with Mr. Charlo's son, I'm in regular communication with him. And so you, you all banned me from working on it, now it's another councilperson involved. I object.
So welcome your objection. But anything else?
I have a question for Fred.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, we did all of it and I'll get my marching instructions.
Yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, maybe if a project, I mean, a question for Buddy, how much of that PEGO money, is that coming in pretty swiftly or?
How, if our, our payments are coming in, they're coming in about what was estimated? And, but you know, we did not put any growth factor in this because we wanted to make sure that we did not levy any property tax to pay for this. So, and that's a commitment that all of the cities and counties have made. And that's the reason we try to live up to that promise.
So, so the seventh of August is not a drop date.
If, I think what we need to do, though, I'm sorry. Well, August the first was when I told us the drop date date. Here's what we, what we really need to do. If y'all wanna add more projects to this, then y'all have gotta be able to say that we can build these projects. Just getting your money and not building the project, or being ready to build the project is a mistake. But if you are ready to build the project, you're ready to put it out for bid and you wanna add it to it, then Bill Camp and I, first thing tomorrow morning, will figure out exactly the maximum amount you can get. And, but don't borrow it if you can't go put it in the ground.
And put it in eight, fixed time, by the line.
Yep. Need to be ready to go, is the point. And that's the reason I'm saying is, if you got land that you need to buy, you're ready to go. You know you gotta buy land. If you got a fire truck you need to buy, then you know you're ready to go. And, but if you got building that you gotta design, or it's gotta be passed around through the mayor council to get even the colors approved, then you ain't ready. Pardon my English? No. I'll have, have the English teacher's accent. All right, and Fred, you got any?
Yes, sir, I, I'm ready if y'all want to make new moves on moving stuff, or how do you? We're ready, if not, if y'all wanna save that for another meeting, I'm ready.
If y'all have got something you want, want to do this, if you got something you wanna add to it, put it on there, put your estimate on it. And then we can always.
Yep, we, we have, the spreadsheet up there is, is popular and if we move any monies around, it'll show us and here's the percentage.
I wanna.
And then there's, I mean, there was one that was on here that I was, was the way it was the sidewalk issue and the path. For the twenty-five thousand that paths don't do sidewalks. So you, you probably need to take that notation off. You can leave the twenty-five thousand there, you can move it somewhere else. That's up to y'all. But we just can't, paths don't do, they don't construct sidewalk to do paths. So we can't designate twenty-five thousand dollars for that. That's the only thing, but like I said, if y'all wanna move, y'all wanna stop looking at doing anything. I will say that one of the helpful things would be is to find out from Bill what our total max is before we start doing that.
Good point.
You know, I saw some preliminary numbers when we were at Buddy's office. Bill had some information, but you know, I'm a little frightened and I'm just gonna tell you why. I don't wanna get to that top max just because recognize that you repaid and take somebody by from what you're gonna do when you pay the money. So we gotta be really judicious in choosing the items to listen. Probably not, I would say I won't go above ten, even if he says we can get to fifteen. You know, just to be conservative, maybe issue ten specific, ten of these specific actual projects that are ready. Specifically ready to go within the, within the timeframe of, under the mandate.
Well, why don't y'all do this, that's.
And that's what we pretty much have done here. We have done a lot of that here already, but if we make any amendments, that's what we'll do.
We didn't know, we didn't know what ballpark we were.
Yeah, okay.
So if this is not a, if we don't have, have to make a decision tonight, we can bring it back on the eighteenth. We should get that information from Bill either tomorrow and Buddy tomorrow, so we'll know what that number is. We will share that with y'all once we get it.
It'll take me until the eighteenth to get my letter finished. It's gonna be about eighty-five pages long.
All right, yes, sir. But so at that point, you know, one of the things, then we can put it on there and look to see what, what additional.
Yeah, we'll see what, we'll see what kind of number.
Please be prepared to knock it out in the future. Thank you, buddy. And if any of y'all need to talk, they got questions about this, call me. And I may not be there that minute, but I'll get back to you that day, first thing in the morning.
Same bat line.
There in for. It's of course, if your voice is rough and tough, that'd be the next afternoon. If it's kind and sweet and gentle, we'll believe you.
Good point.
Mayor, come on, real quick. Thanks, Buddy. Thanks, all of y'all. Always a pleasure to see you.
Appreciate you, Captain.
Appreciate you. They all, they all please work on, you know, they sit.
Real, real quick, Mayor, if you let me, I wanna show you.
Go ahead, Fred.
And this is probably a quick revote, you want like this. This is gonna be, you know, one of the things we've been talking about as I've been tracking for this. Moving forward and for SLOSS three, I'm gonna give you an example of how we're gonna, how we're planning on doing that. Right now, on our PEGO list, this is what we have. And I'm gonna give y'all a quick analogy of how this works. This is the way we're gonna be able to track our financing moving forward as it relates to our individual SLOSS projects. So right now, on our PEGO, we've got four projects that, that's already in, in the movement in the heart of the IT. And as you can see, we've already spent some money in IT already in terms of buying our, our computer systems and stuff for our service. We're in the removal making that already, this is where we are now. So of the six hundred thousand, we have a lot of it in there, six or five hundred in there. We're seventy percent complete. From the overall PEGO project list, as it's currently stands, we're only one point fi- eight percent complete. So you'll be able to see this as we make modifications and I'm giving a great example. Y'all just approve an invoice for me at eight thousand two hundred and fifty, okay? So when I pay that bill, that's what it's gonna reflect.
And this will be on our webpage.
And I'm gonna post this on the webpage, so it's gonna be accessible to everybody. So you can see how we're doing. So that is the master list for our PEGO. But as we go to specific lists and I'll use IT, now you see how we're actually breaking down the IT costs. What's being spent on computers, what's being spent on the Wi-Fi system, the iPads, the storage systems, the network systems, talent technology systems, the services in the court and city, city hall. And so as we make, as we make purchases in those areas, there's a lot of totals that, that might shift a little bit, understanding that we can't go above that number. So you know, if you see something happening and you see us going over in a category, and I'll use this one, let's say, for instance, we go to a hundred and five, then we'll, you'll start to see that, hey, Fred, if y'all were to over mine computers, was there a reason for that? Y'all be able to ask that question. Do we need more computers than we typically, than we thought we needed? Because at the end, what it's gonna do is gonna take some money from one of these other items because we've got it to the, we can't go over.
Good job.
That will also help us when it comes to us reporting. On an annual basis, we have to do our annual reporting, that will help us because we already have this data already captured in there.
Frederick, can you add a bar in its line? I, I would anticipate that we wouldn't go over, but just in case, just in case we do, in some line, at least citizens would be able to see, they'd be able to see it readily.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you don't have to do it now, but.
I'm just making it up.
Okay.
And, yeah, because it is very up order, so that if we go over.
Yep, and you will see that. The, the key here is, the key here is, you'll see, when, when you get your project completed and you, well, it won't tell you because it'll stay stuck at a certain number for a long time. So let's say that's all the computers we purchased, so it'll stay at thirty-eight percent. What will happen is.
The bottom percentage will be over a hundred.
Well, not really. If you, if he says, I don't need to buy any more replacement computers. And, and that's it, even though we got it a hundred and seven, the difference of the forty-two thousand versus the hundred will spread down to the bottom. The, the main kicker is here is that, at the end of the day, what you wanna see is a hundred percent here. And you wanna see those numbers, that number and those number line up. You don't wanna go over six hundred thousand, because that's already a lot of the spend. So becoming, under that amount, be able to accomplish anything under that amount, guess what? Now, you have some money left or where it can go to a PEGO project that's already a priority project or a project on your list already. So that money could be, within that category, it could be moved off. We could say, hey, we could do some other things where it can, when it comes to mayor council and say, look, we're left with sixty thousand dollars. This is an opportunity for us to change the mic system in this room that we didn't, wasn't able to replace. Can we use that fund to do the mics? And y'all will say yes, and then we authorize, and then it'll equal up. But this would be a good way of us keeping track of, of our projects moving forward. I wanted to show you all that. You have it individually, but this tracks, like I said, it tracks to our individual projects as we do them. The cemetery project, I hadn't added that one yet. But as we start to add them, as we start doing more and more projects, the fire truck, you'll see the fire trucks, the percentage, you'll see the three payments come in. Then you'll see that one hundred percent complete. Fire trucks will be off the, off the table. You, citizens will be able to see that and be able to say, oh, yeah, they bought the fire trucks. Not only did you see them on the road, you're able to go on the list and see the, with them. And so that's, that's, that's the system we're using. So you have your PEGO slots, and then we have our bonded slots. At which point, you know, we're gonna do the very same thing right now, those are our bonded projects. If those variances change a little bit, we'll change them based on our upcoming meetings. And then we'll have individual tabs, so we have Alexander Park Phase Two. We have Alexander Park Phase Two, and we'll list all the projects in Alexander Park Phase Two with their specific causes. And we'll track them based on that. And you can work back to the invoices, because this spreadsheet will be with every invoice that we do, that we pay. So that's, that's the way we're gonna keep track of. As I told y'all, I, I wasn't here for SLOSS three, but I'm here for SLOSS four, so we can do as we can to manage the project in here, in the system.
Good job.
And also, there might be a provision for us to go away from this. We're still investigating with, with, with ENCODE. Because we're thinking that they do help, we might have been paying for a project management tool. If that's in there and it's worthwhile, I might shift this over to the ENCODE system. That way, everything gets tracked too, even the invoices wants to approve. And I'll bring that back and show you all what that looks like if we're able to migrate into that format. And migrate away from this, we'll do that, as long as we can still keep the information on the website so people can see. But that's just a much more efficient way of doing it, that system exists. Right now, we have a call in to Tyler to find out if we actually give up that margin. But I will present that to you all, so y'all see what, what, that there is going to be a system in place to keep track of progress as well as finances, as it relates to the specific projects.
And then we won't drag everybody, please.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Including SL?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, Fred. Any other information we want to share with Fred?
That's, that's it on this.
And Mayor, may I just say something? I've tried to encourage the council to think about SLOSS projects early on. And to decide what they're gonna be, and decide whether or not they need, like, that we're talking about, like the scrub. They picked the project, they did all the stuff that was necessary, so that it's ready to go on SLOSS. It's shelf ready, it's ready to go, they know they can bond it, and they know they can build it. And I really hope that over the course of the next six years, that while we're in the midst of all of this, that we're all beginning to project and think about what we need for the next SLOSS and pick those macro projects that we really wanna see done. Then require that kind of activity, so that we are ready for the next one. And we don't have to, you know, worry about what we're doing. Because that would have been proven, you know, even without this, when this is going to go up at this point.
Yes, and, and, and real quick now to, to, to speak back on, on this, since that's something that we've already developed as a great, excuse me. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's something that we've already, did, we did last year, initially put together a capital improvements program with a list of capital improvements to need, and we phased them over five years. Obviously, that's something that we're trying to refine even more so, so that I can be, you know, be putting it as part of the budget. What we're doing now is capturing some of those things and Keith and I have been working to make sure that those major capital projects are hitting the list and you're seeing it. I presented that to y'all last year, the chart when we did the capital improvement program. Five years out, they could total them up to sixty-two million, if I remember correctly. There's running out of sixty-two million of the capital projects that are out there over the next five years. We understand some of those won't get funded, just because, you know, the funding sources vary between general fund, SLOSS, to grant monies to whatever. And so grants obviously is something that's not always consistent, so those might get pushed in and out based on priority. But I don't even talk about that, it's more of a, 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 but that's something that we're working to get.
But it's like what they said, they're still working just to get to the bonded stage to be able to spend their money. So, and picking colors, I know I was being kinda fussy about, you know, gee, we need to take a little bit of colors on our courthouse. But the reality is, if we're ready when the SLOSS comes up, and we're gonna build a building or we're going to do anything like that, we need to have all of that done.
Well, let's move on down to item nine. Rodney, let's, we've got two items, we've got Greg Nobles with a project on Nell Road. And it looks like the public here is voting for eight, eighteen. But we, we welcome you, any, any comments you might like to share with this council relative to this application?
What I'd like to point out and give to you and everybody is the, we're trying to right a wrong, to speak, on this project where that, in the course of realigning Highway twenty at Nell Road, these lines got skewed. And so what should be a good highway commercial lot is R seventy-five. And neither side of the, Rodney just put up a diagram. If you can tell, the lot is comprised of the blue and yellow triangle. And it's split, so neither side of this lot is good for anything, the way it currently is zoned. So we're trying to get a C two zoning on that, so we can hopefully bring in another quality retailer to that area is what we're looking for.
Anyone, anybody?
The property next to it, C two.
Property next to it, on the left is C two. The property on the right is the multifamily tract, the villa's at South Point.
Which is currently built.
It's currently built. And actually, what we touched on there is just the driveway and the front office area. There's no, the residences are removed further back, so they won't really be impacted.
I think you're right, the way it's set up now, you can't really do anything with it.
It's kinda stuck. And, and if, if you're marketing to a quality retailer, then that's the first thing they wanna know is it's zoned. And they don't, a lot of times don't wait on the zoning process, so we're just trying to get ahead of it. It's a property between, around one point six, I think.
Oh, yeah, I see it, I have, yeah, one point six.
Rodney, you have any?
Yes, indeed, Mayor, I wanna refresh your memory as far as the, yourself and the council. The subject property is in the red outline on the screen. How we got here to where we are today is, this is the maze property, which is in the red outline. It was annexed to create the western boundary of your South Point development area. This is the residual piece where we had the zoning conflict. It was residual leftover from the South Point property we know today, and the those at South Point. And it had the mixed zoning of P, it was a PUD at that time, R seventy-five, R one hundred. And then this is what we then have today with the current situation. So what, the reason why we've asked for the extension to the eighteen, there were initial conditions here on this area of the property with Maze that do traverse across a portion of the subject property. And then I have provided the applicant with our most recent zoning case, which is on the State Route twenty-four door, that they were given, this was the. This was the property that was across from South Point. And we will be finalizing the mediation on the conditions of zoning and tailoring, so in that way, it will be a matchup with our other development standards along twenty.
We, we will be going to C-three, by the way. This would, this would be, we're going to C-three?
Uh, no, sir, C-two.
Councilperson, does anybody have any questions? Uh, always good to see you. Greg, I just want to be sure about it. I just read it while I was looking at you, and I, I pulled phone, but certainly we'd welcome with the comments.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That gives us heads up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Okay, Rodney, let's, uh, and we'll see you on the, on the eighteenth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Uh, Gerald Swiniger, Pitt, one pit for Macon, uh, Councilman Stewart's district, uh, Rodney, want you to bring that to our attention, and I'll call on.
Yes, Mr. David Williams is going to join us, uh, as representative for Mr. Swiniger.
Yeah, uh, want you to kind of bring us up to date, and we'll, oh, on this way.
Okay, in your packets of information, this is your subject property in the red outline.
Right.
It's, uh, at the intersection of College and Macon Street. This is the main part of the estate tract. The applicant, which will be going over shortly, is to add that, add this property to that property. Now, what we have is, historically, the subject property was part of a planned residential townhome development. And it goes back to ordinance, uh, zero zero dash zero two dash two one in two thousand. And there was a list of conditions that I provided to Mr. Williams for us to go through. Uh, we would be removing the RT's, RTD zoning, because a portion of the RT zoning property is now a personal residence and also occupied by Shidle Baptist Church. So it's fairly clear-cut, resolving an existing zoning from two thousand.
Perfect, sir. I couldn't have said it there.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Swiniger has, has bought this property. He owns, uh, one of Jake's properties on the other side. Uh, and he just wants to, uh, hedge plans or leave it like it is, but if he ever sells it, he doesn't want a multifamily coming next to him. So we're just downzoning actually to a residential, it's the same use, not the same zoning, but same use on things on both sides and behind it. And we just thought it would be more, uh, consistent with the neighborhood and make everybody happy.
And you can tell him for me, I said thank you, because that's where the old round residence was. And lightning struck and it burned in a matter of less than ten minutes one night, so, um.
Six thirty, I believe.
I mean, six thirty in the morning, yes. And, because it was all lighter time, and it was gone, so.
Jared's behind us.
Oh. Thank you, thank you very much.
I thank everybody who's here to come for what you folks trying to do here.
Well, I thanked him over the years for what he did and, and, um, saving the house, which now is his own. And helping save Macon Street overall and College as a, as a whole, so. Are you going to take care of all those other houses in College Street?
I guess. All right, uh, we have another.
No.
Well, we're, we're happy to have you, and of course, we'll, uh, uh, move forward this on the eighteenth, I thought, whether it is or not, but, uh, but I'm very pleased to see that you're helping to do this.
We appreciate your confidence in seeing you.
Thank you, thank you. Keith? Looks like you are number ten and number eleven. Come up and join us. Jared, thank you for being here. Always good to see you.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, come in.
Uh, the first item is, we've been looking at the, uh, water loss program that we've been going on. Uh, replacing, Ronnie's groups almost completely replaced all of the old poly lines, all of the galvanized lines. Uh, and the next thing we ran into, uh, was looking at our meters, and our meters are warranted for ten years. And a majority of those, about eighty-five to ninety percent of those are twelve plus years old. Which means if the meter goes bad, you replace it. Um, while we were going through the process of trying to get the FCC license renewed, the hatchery helped us a lot with that. Uh, somewhere along the line, the, between administrations, the letter was lost or passed forward. But anyway, uh, we got the FCC license approved, then we found out that the current meters that we have, uh, have, there's a wire unit that comes up that we use for the radio read, um, and those are going to be obsolete within the next three years. So instead of just deciding that we're going to replace it with the current meters that we have, we looked at other meter systems. And what we found was a meter system, uh, that is compatible with ENCODE, that other cities and communities are using. And that it's cheaper in the long run, and it's a twenty-year meter. So anything happens to that meter, anything, somebody hits the endpoint, which is the wire unit with a lawnmower, they replace the entire unit. Where the current unit, if that hits, it costs you a hundred and twenty-five dollars to replace that meter, so.
Plus the time of the network.
Plus the time of the network, so. In doing the package, I asked Ronnie to include, uh, and this is not just, we're going to do this overnight. What I've asked you to do is not put any more money into the current meters that we have. But we can start replacing these meters and do this over four years, uh, using some reserved money, he has some budgeted money, uh, and just start working in that direction. The endpoint for this, uh, is that we're going to have a radio read unit that will be tower read. That the ladies downstairs can push a button, and it will read the meters. The other thing that this is going to provide is that if three oh five racetrack road normally uses a hundred gallons a day, and then two, three days in a row uses a thousand gallons, it will send an alert to Ronnie or to the ladies. And they can contact the homeowner and alert them to the fact that they have a leak. Now, that's beneficial in helping the customer get the leak fixed, and it's also beneficial that if they let it go for two months and come in and want to have their bill reduced, we can say, "Well, we notified you, we documented, we notified you." And we have a little bit more leverage in negotiating payment.
Will these work on commercial?
Yes, they'll work on commercials as well. The overall cost difference to the final product of these is if we go with the current, to get the same radio read, uh, is one point six meter. To use the new meter system will be nine hundred and three thousand dollars. So it's a significant savings along the line as well. And I don't know about to rest you all, but twenty years from now, I'm not going to be worried about your meters, so.
And no FCC license?
And no FCC license within the meter read, so we don't have to worry about whether we got the FCC license in. So what we're asking for is, he's going to use some of his budgeted money, uh, two starter packages, which include, uh, everything that we need to get going, uh, and provide for now, vehicle reads. Because we won't reach until we replace all the meters, we won't have that capability of pressing the button and reading over the radio. But we're asking for approximately eighty thousand, it's thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for each starter package, and we're looking for two of them. So you're looking at approximately eighty thousand dollars that will come out of the water reserve reserves to get this program underway.
You've heard the recommendation, I haven't taken a motion?
Um, before we make a question?
Oh, excuse me. Any question? I'm sorry.
I would like for us to, um, look at this in SLOSS, because it's shelf-ready and ready to go. And it would be saving, um, the city an awful lot, and done and done.
We could definitely look at it, but I think this, get these starter kits is probably pretty important to get right away, so.
Well, I, I understand that, but I would, I just wanted to say, we, it's shelf-ready, it's ready to go, it's something that could be, we could look at putting in a SLOSS.
I don't actually, no, I'm just looking at the categories, and I don't think the categories that were in that are actually.
Nothing? Absolutely nothing. Okay.
Got a motion? One second, thank you so much. Good presentation, it's been Keith.
Thank you.
Any, anybody have any questions about, uh, uh, these two starter kits? Is this Brian, got a motion in the second on the floor?
The motion is to approve the purchase of the two starter kits in the amount of approximately eighty thousand dollars to be paid for out of water sewer reserve.
Okay, those in support of the motion, second, please raise a hand. Those in opposition, likewise.
Sixty-five.
Thank you so much. Uh, let's move on down to the second item, Keith.
The second item is something that's in the CIP plan. For the last ten years, we've, um, contracted out, uh, water loss. Having somebody come with a correlator and try and find water leaks. And it's really been, in my opinion, not very successful in what they've had to do. Uh, last year, we was introduced that there's a new technology out there, that one works on plastic pipes. And then there's a second correlator that works on, uh, metal pipes. And what this does is, that allows you to hook up between two water meters, the device listens to it. It used to be you had to have a very trained ear, you had to be extremely, uh, versed in what you were doing. Uh, the new technology will basically alert you to the fact that there's a leak. Uh, and then you take a second, uh, you take a ground microphone and you walk in between. Now, it will approximate the twenty-five feet from this hydrant and fifty feet from this hydrant, and then you'll have a, then you got to go find the leak. We bought the ground penetrating radar, uh, which can help us locate how deep the pipe is and prepare for that. Uh, the ground microphones and, and listening sticks will allow you to pinpoint where that leak is. And basically, it's hearing the cavitation of the water spraying and the air circulating and hitting in the dirt, and that's what it's listening for. Um, we're at thirty percent on loss and uncalibrated water. Uh, we need to be at fifteen percent or better. And the only way to get to that is to find these leaks and patch them and get them taken care of. Uh, we can contract this out at ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year, uh, and continue the process that we've been doing, but we're still at thirty percent.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, what we're asking for is to purchase both of the correlators, and then Ronnie's going to absorb some of the money from the, what we normally pay the contractor to buy the ground microphones out of his budget, and the training for the equipment out of his budget. So, uh, at that point in time, once this is on the ground, I'm almost going to assure you, well, I will assure you, that within a year, we'll more than pay for this piece of the, of this device. So, uh, anyway, that's what we're, we're looking to get the two for.
We have, um, staff now that can use, like, if you had it today, we'd have staff that could use it today. Is that fair to say?
Yes, we have staff that actually went out and used this equipment, this, this same equipment. They simulated a leak, and they were able to use the leak too. They were training at the same time in Henry County.
Okay.
Then we invited them back to do the simulation of another leak, to see where they could find, whether they could find, and it works. And it's, it's not, uh, this is pretty much like having the high-dollar metal detector that tells you what it is and where it is.
As that's one of the concerns.
The bar and rock.
Right, yeah, instead, instead of. Right of code makers to a new product.
Keith, do you think it would help us solve that problem over at, uh, Andy Davis's, you know, that, kind of that, um, reoccurring problem with water that just appears, and we haven't been able to figure out where it comes from?
That's, that's the type of thing that we're using for. The other thing is Ronnie's, he can move through the city fairly rapidly with this device, being on the ground. I mean, they can have two guys working this and then locate where they're at, find where the major leaks are, go back and pinpoint those. Uh, the one leak that we had out here on John Frank Ward when they were doing the sewer rehab would have paid for these, and they, you know, they didn't find that. And the guy that we had come in never found that. So, uh, and that was spraying straight into the sewer. And, you know, a hundred thousand gallons a day is a lot of water.
You're treating water, treating water.
Yeah, it's, it's. That part of, part of that's changed the way that we manage the waste park, right? I mean, it's that significant that you have to adjust the way that you do things, so, uh, we're excited about this, and, and I mean, I'm really excited about the fact that if this can, you know, reduce it down to fifteen percent, then, you know, you're saving three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I hope you're keeping a list of all of this money you're saving in the city.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking for commissioners.
Okay.
Any idea of how long this stuff will last, shelf life was?
The correlators, they have like a ten-year warranty on them, so.
Okay, folks, need to move forward on this. Can we get a motion?
Seven.
Seven.
One second, okay. Any other question, ladies, gentlemen?
No question, just an observation.
Okay.
The letterhead, uh, my name's, uh.
Uh-oh.
And it's not your fault, it's, it's the print. I'm, I'm not listed as a council member.
We want to make sure we don't send this out.
All right, Ms. Price, we got a motion, second on the floor.
The motion is to purchase two correlators to, um, for leak detection in the water system for combined price of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay, ladies, gentlemen, those in favor of this motion, second?
Sixty-five.
That's fair enough. Keith, good job.
Here's something to, uh, for Keith to bring about, and for the city to bring about. It has a beautiful piece of equipment out there that, um, heats up asphalt, um, pulls it up, pulls the asphalt up, recycles it, and lays it down, all at the same time, you already been buying new asphalt. And you can drive on it within ten minutes of it being laid, and.
I'll bring that to you.
Yeah.
That really is that.
Is that a little cheaper than what you just, uh?
Nah.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. Ms. Grant, welcome.
We'd like to make some.
Ms. Grant's got a review of financial policy. Come up and have a seat, man.
These finance, these are the same financial policies that we presented, so I will not go over any detail, I'm just going to get some of the highlights of the project. Uh, the purpose and the objective of this policy is basically integrity, accountability, and transparency. Um, we're looking at the budget here, I mean, operating budget, item number two. It will be from July first and the end of June thirtieth, and it will be prepared annually by the city administrator and presented to mayor and council. Item two point three, uh, balance has to be, the budget has to be balanced, uh, for all funds. We should have two public hearings, and it should be adopted, the budget should be adopted by the municipal.
I have, uh, two point six, and I have some changes I would like to suggest.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like, it says city administrator and department heads, I'd like to include that report to the city clerk, uh, the mayor, and the council members would get that report too. Two point six.
You know, is that, Roger? It says the city administrator will present summary financial and regulatory reports to the mayor and council.
First, and it says detailed monthly financial report.
Yeah, do you see something, that's two different reports though, isn't it?
How, how many pages is this report?
The report is, uh, for all departments, it's running maybe a hundred or something like that.
That's too much cost of the city. I just see an electronic copy if somebody wants it, but that's, that's too much.
It has a summary page, that gives you a summary of the revenues and expenditures. We have, what did we send out the last month, for June, was the summary page, and that's what I sent out to the mayor and council. So if you want to continue to see, receive that report, we can send that report down.
Upon request will be fine. Sometimes, though, in these summaries, you don't get all the details. And I think as council members, we need to.
If we get the summary report, and then we want to go deeper, then you can request.
I know, we'll put in the language here, upon request.
The full-fledged, if you want to go to that extra, extra depth.
Just put upon request, and that takes.
You still have that additional copy anywhere, right?
Uh, yes, I mean, we can, uh, keep it up. Okay, going back to the budget process, uh, uh, we're, the department heads are responsible for being involved and irresponsible for submitting and managing their budgets. Uh, they are also to participate in the budget process and submit funding requests, that's in two point four, two point five. Okay, go to page two, budget transfers, the, uh, the budget adjustments, the city administrator will have the authority to. Go to page two, budget transfers, the, uh, the budget adjustments, the city administrator will have the authority to approve ten thousand dollars or less for intra-departmental adjustment, that is, within the departments, they can move for their line items. If it's over ten thousand dollars or is crossing department lines, intra, then we need mayor and council approval, and it must be done by a budget resolution. Encumbered funds, that is when they put in a PO, that encumbrance fund. So, at the end of the year, they have not procured those items, then it will lapse at the end of the year with the exception of the CIP plan. Okay, and then that takes us to item number three. We define what a CIP, what a capital project plan is. Basically, it's ten years, the asset must have a useful life of ten years or more. It has to have a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars or more in order to be considered a capital project.
Well, Mita, has that, has that been amended by GAAP? It used, oh, it used to be five and ten. Has it been amended?
Well, that's for, uh, capital outlets, so this is for projects. Projects have to exceed twenty-five thousand. So, a project could be construction, it could be replacement or improvements. A capital outlet would be something like a piece of equipment that has to exceed five thousand dollars. And it has to have a useful life of two years, uh-huh, but less than ten. So, if it's ten years, it has to be a capital project. Uh, it also requires that we have three point ones, that we have to have a CIP plan, which is for five years. We've already developed that, and, uh, and it must be updated annually. Uh, three point two talks about adoption of the budget and the memo control. Basically, again, it says a resolution for, for the CIP, you have to have a balanced budget, you have to identify the sources. And then you have to make sure that you have the means to fund it. And that those projects, if you have an appropriation of three point two dash two, that, that appropriation will not lapse. So, for instance, if the project gets five years to completely allocate it, twenty thousand dollars a year, it doesn't lapse until you complete that project. So, the twenty thousand dollars will not revert back to the general fund for five years. And then jump to page three, uh, reporting, again, this is monthly financial reports.
More, uh, it said, uh, reports to the city administrator. Could you also include the city clerk, mayor, and council members?
A summary report?
Yeah, on the month, monthly financial report. And the second part on that page is, I have a question. You can have a debt, which is number four, but I don't see anything in there about an emergency crisis. What if we went into war or something?
This is going to be addressed later when we start talking about fund balance and reverse. That's what that's addressing that page.
So, you do address the...
Yes, it's addressed later on. Okay, page three basically talks about debt. The only thing that I would like to highlight here, again, it has to be determined, uh, when it comes to determine that the future user will receive benefit from improvement, it must be necessary to provide basic services, and it does not, it does not constitute a reasonable burden to the taxpayers. And then at four point three talks about sound financial financing debt. The things I would like to highlight is that you have to project the revenue source, how are you going to pay the debt back, and the debt that you encourage should not exceed the expected useful life of the assets, which is four point three. And then four point three dash four, and the benefit of the improvement cannot exceed the total cost of food and, uh, interest. Page four will talk about revenues. We talked about this other time, but I'm not going to go into any details unless you have any questions. Section six talks about accounting, auditing, financial reporting.
I have a question, um, Ms. Sue. Could you, uh, yes, five point two, point seven, uh, could you give me an example of this? Where's my fund, uh, yeah, why would you, where would, where would you...
There may be allocation of costs, for instance, some of the, your water and sewer fund, your splosh, your impact fees, they have administrative costs that's not absorbed under those funds. So, we charge an allocation based on services, use of the equipment, the building, the employees, so you'd have a formula. Some generally, it doesn't exceed three percent of your administrative, total revenues for administrative costs.
But you're actually charging net against somebody else's budget?
Correct.
It's to a fund.
It's called, it's called crossification, and you should do that.
It goes back to the general fund.
Yes, the revenues go back to the general fund. The expenses are allocated in those particular funds.
I think the example, example that ought to be where, and I'll just use this as an example. Stormwater, I don't want to stormwater, let's use water. Obviously, water don't do its own accounting. So, if you, if we, if you say you can do X amount because accounting is actually, the general fund is actually providing a service to the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund can actually cost what that is and say, this is unnecessary to provide to the general fund because that administrative service is actually being done by the, by the general fund, uh, fund activity. So, that's where you typically see that. It's called cross.
And the shared cost, but typically it doesn't exceed three percent. And most grants that you receive, federal, that, you know, we have a, a form, but typically you like to know three percent for most of them.
Uh, you know, a good one, here's a good one.
A grant.
Splosh, okay, the county, and, and this is where, when we had the splosh committee meeting, we had some people who were upset because they saw our splosh and went if they're costing three million dollars over the old fifty-one million dollars splosh. Some don't like that. And they said, well, I wouldn't pay him all of that, but obviously, the county has a splosh department that actually manages their splosh. So, they pulled their percentage of water by law, transferred that to a splosh department, and that splosh department does all the engineering and administrative costs. We can do that here, but we don't. We don't take that because at that point, if you take that off, let's say we have a hundred dollars, and it takes ten dollars to do that, now we got ninety dollars to spend towards my projects. We just absorb that cost into the general fund for the most part, because, and I'll give an example. What I just did to provide that charge, and as I started tracking and track, tracking the fund, technically acted actually bill splosh for the administrative function that I did to provide for management of the splosh. We don't do that, but that can happen. That's where you could add that cost allocation, for that example of it. We don't do it, but the county does.
Hundred six point three, auditing, uh, you provide the report. Results of the annual audit shall be provided to the mayor and the city council, but I don't see where you, the city manager or the city clerk.
Typically, what you have is either a finance committee, I mean, an audit committee, or the audit is handled and managed by the finance director or treasurer, whoever's responsible for it. And then, once the audit is completed, then you have a meeting with your city administrator, and they go over it, and then, at that point, once the report is finalized, then you report back to the audit committee. So, we don't have an oversight committee, and most governmental agencies don't have to, unless they're large, pretty large, and we may have an audit committee. But we're small, so it's basically going to be finance.
And I, well, Mita, I just wanna add here that that's the problem with our process right now. It's supposed to remain at an independent status, and as long as there's engagement by the city administrator or engagement by the mayor, as is our current situation, then it ceases to be an independent audit.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Because the auditor has been compromised.
Page six, six point five, comprehensive annual reporting reports, the CAFR.
And that one too, is, uh, I would think it shall be provided to the city administrator, the city clerk, mayor, and council members.
Typically, it's when it's completed, there's no problem. It's typically posted.
It becomes a public, that becomes a public document, like a budget.
It's a documented.
So, I mean, by, by virtue of being developed, that capital goes to everybody.
And there's seven point one, I have something there too. Fund balance will be provided accordingly to the mayor, the city manager, and the council members. On the report, showing what the balance is.
That's not a problem, it's really, when we get to Dallas, it's all about the surrender. Okay, so let's go back to the CAFR report. This is included in the CAFR, it's the financial audit. Your CAFR basically has statistical information, and this information is used to basically market, some marketing tool for the city. It gives you statistics on your, your population, citizens that you have, your median income. So, all of that statistical information, how much you've had in the past, what your military has been in the past, revenues, things of that nature. That is something that's done because it's in the audit, but it is posted, and it should be a public document this year to help market your city.
Well, Mita, at some point, I guess, when we, later on, as we, as we get to the point where we're developing a CAFR on a consistent basis, there's another report that's called a PAFR, which is your popular, I don't know, reporting report. I know in Griffin, we did both. We did the CAFR and the PAFR. And that's something that I'd like to do here, and it's a little bit more, it's a little more...
It's a little bit, it's a little bit more compressed than the CAFR. It does not have as, as many financial reports, kind of consolidate and make it, uh, easier to read to the layperson. The CAFR has a lot of information on it, and again, it's, it includes your audit report, and it's done, you did have one done this year. This is what you had a CAFR prepared. Okay, fund balance, fund balance is, uh, item number seven. Back two years ago, um, GASP required that we change the titles of your fund balance. Before, we had restricted, unrestricted, deserved, undeserved. That's changed, and we want to drop down, uh, down to seven point three. And it gives a definition. Non-spendable is what we have to say. You've got five categories on how you classify your fund balance. Non-spendable is means you cannot split it, generally things like inventory, um, prepaid items, it's a non-cash item. So, that's legally, by then, there's nothing you can do about prepaid expenses and things of that nature for your fund balance. Restricted balance is balance that's restricted for specific purposes, and that may be done externally by legislation, it may be done by grants, your creditors, or you may have someone that may donate something and put restrictions on, uh, your assets. And then you have committed balance. This is a balance that's used for purposes imposed by formal action, which is done by mayor and council, orders of resolution, and it includes all funds not designated as non-spendable, restricted, assigned, or unassigned. And these are funds that's transferred to your, uh, undersigned balance if you need to pay something, it comes up in an emergency. Where we, uh, this is something that's up to you, that the mayor and council can decide whether or not they want to maintain it at a minimum of twenty percent. That's something that's standard, uh, you know, just being recommended by most governmental agencies to try to strive for a twenty percent level.
Is that three months? Is that three months?
No, it's just twenty percent of your revenues. Okay, this, this state requires a three month, which you should have three months of operating expenditures in the bank. Okay, uh, again, this is the highest level of authority, and it requires formal action. Okay, assigned balance is balance that's set aside for the fund treasury deficit in the future, and it's not to put here. It does not require you to have a formal action such as a, uh, budget resolution. It could come from your city administrator, or it could come from your council, request to have assigned by balance. Undassigned balance is a big man in the mouth, but you have your fund balance. That's after you look at the classification for non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned. Again, if that balance falls below twenty percent, typically you transfer the funds from your committed balance. If it exceeds twenty percent, then you transfer from undersigned to it here. That's the way you know you're supposed to fund. Why do you wanna have undersigned balance? What do you do with it? The purpose is basically the cash flow, operating contingencies, loans that may have to be paid back, and insurance and grants, that's not, you know, grants, from looking at grants, you have what you have to, to follow reimbursement with grants. So, you put the funds, you didn't have fund expenses from something, you could pull that out of your, uh, undersigned balance. And, uh, seven five, seven point five, so you just do that annually, and then that's where it talks about moving the funds. Like, you want to petty cash or something?
I have a question about petty cash. I read the procedure for petty cash, and I don't understand why we even use petty cash if we have P cards. Because time you go through all this, fill out these paperwork and get approval, why don't they just go ahead and, it's a fifty dollar? Why not just go ahead and use a P card?
Well, currently, the only department that has petty cash or startup cash is your customer service department. Not aware of any other department having any petty cash funds. They are using their P cards. The petty cash that we have, which we call a startup cash, is here for customer service when they open their registers. That's the only cash that I'm...
Sure, if they need, okay, that makes sense, and, but, and only if you're gonna have petty cash in every department.
Okay.
I had the same question too.
If we don't, if, if, if some desire that we need to have, and we have got ours already, then that's the...
I have, um, I have quite a few issues, and of course, the council can join in on, on this number nine down there, city issued credit cards. It's, um, nine point one says, it's, I heard the approval of the city administrator. I think the mayor and the council should be notified who asked the P cards.
We, I mean, we have a list right now, who has P cards, but it's kind of impractical for us to kind of, every time we have someone, someone new come on, we have to wait to get approval.
He's not getting notified.
I just, just notify.
If there's a change, and, so you're saying you want to be notified if there's a change, and who's receiving credit card?
I think we should know.
Right now, only the department heads, it's the department heads, if there's a need, they, they really have to justify if there's a reason why there's a, uh, credit card. But typically, it's limited to your department head, and maybe a few others that may have a need for a credit card, but they have to justify. And then, in addition to that, we control the limit, based on the person that's making the request. You may have five hundred dollars, it may be a thousand dollars. When I first came here, people wide open, seventy-five thousand dollars credit, and I, and then we cut that out. So, we, we, right now, if you wanna know, the department heads have five thousand, with the exception of a few that may need seventy-five hundred, but everybody else is below that amount, and most of the people are a thousand dollars.
We, we need to know who asked.
I'm just questioning, and, and Roger, this is just to help me out, what would we do with that information?
Well, you know, the next thing you know, who has the card? And this comes up all the time if we go to breakfast down there. The transportation committee, we have to have a credit card to pay that day, so, uh, and sometimes the mayor's not there.
Well, typically, the, the city clerk asked me, when I came, there was five cards undersigned. I cut them off and, and just, uh, deactivated those cards, because what happens if you don't assign a card to a specific person? What happens? You lose accountability. Somebody signed, they may forget to sign the card out, there may be a charge, and we cannot account for that, so...
What I'm saying, though, it says only the named cardholder shall be authorized to use the credit card. They will not, I went, I've been through this. I had to pay for the breakfast. They wouldn't let me leave the place, and I didn't have a card.
I think that's why we have reimbursement system, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, that's, it just don't, why don't we have it where if, at least the council members can use the card?
Personally, I would say purchasing cards should be used for those types of expenditures. That, that's, that's just my, my opinion.
No, but, I'm, so you go through a re, I went through a reimbursement, but it takes, oh, a while, I'm just saying, so...
Or you could request a prepayment if you, you know, send it to travel and, and per diem.
Yeah, reimbursement should take, you should get your, mayor and council simply receive their reimbursements back pretty quick. If I'm aware that there's a reimbursement, and I've had a conversation, uh, when it came to my attention, that you guys are just like the next payroll, we try to get them out, and the next payroll from the time that we proceed, check line, when we receive them. So, we try to reimburse mayor and council pretty quick when we can fund the...
Yeah, and I had a recent situation where I had a event out on behalf of the city, and got things taken care of very quickly.
Okay, so I just need to know what about them, and really definitely make sure that happens.
Okay, uh, I don't have anything else on that page.
Okay, I do want to emphasize a couple of things. Uh, nine point two says that it should be used for city business only. So, that is, it's not reimbursing for personal expenses on that one, so we need to make that one have like that. And then it says here, uh, placement of credit card documentation may result in a credit card bill just being canceled, so... We do have, you know, occasions where that may happen. Uh, we have not had a situation here where, providing what you do, wanna keep it in your documents, just in case we have any issues with that.
Who, who recognizes the CAFR?
Uh, basically, every month, hopefully, we'll get to the point where we could upload it, but each one of our credit, our credit card users, they go in each month, count their expenses, and then they provide the receipts, and they give them to accounts payable. Accounts payable takes that, match that with the charges on the bill, and pay the entire bill, because we have to pay the bill, we cannot... Accounts payable takes that, match that with the charges on the bill, and pay the entire bill, because we have to pay the bill, we cannot P C R. And if we don't have a receipt, we typically contact the, uh, user and say, hey, we need your invoices to receive. If for some reason a receipt is lost or misplaced, then we give them an opportunity to write an explanation. After the second time, if we, if it happens, second time, then that's when we start talking about, well, we may have to, uh, suspend that charging privilege. But we have not had any concerns with that, most, most of our department heads have turned in their receipts, and, you know, we don't have a problem. Okay, uh, page number nine talks about investment, and I'm just going to get the highlights of this. Uh, the purpose of this is to say that we need to invest in safe, uh, uh, investment vehicles. We need, it needs to be, we're looking at liquidity, uh, the return on investment should not be our priority. Basically, it's the secondary important when it comes to sec- uh, secondary liquidity. And let me jump back to ten point two, liquidity is important, and this is during the time when you may receive all of your, your tax, your property tax money. That's what we have, what we call, we're cash rich, you know, we could pay the money and, and put it in, we could invest it during that period. And then you want it to be, uh, uh, liquid, uh, liquidity, so that you can go and pull that money out at any time. You may invest it in CDs, you may have it in Georgia Fund One, where you can reach that money at any time, if you have an emergency coming, you can get those funds pretty quickly, you don't have to worry about needing a one year, you have, they have penalties for that, you know, you have to invest in CDs a year, you may need a price at that time, so you have to stagger, and that's what this is about, but then you talk about diversification, you don't want to put all of your money in one, uh, one type of investment, too. Now, delegation of the city says that the manage, overall management of investment programs is a responsibility of the city administrator. Uh, and it also say that we must comply with, uh, the Fisher Coles, with the state of Georgia. Uh, safekeeping, I'm going to go to page ten, uh, this is important that, that we're going to use a third party, we can put the, we have any investments like, uh, stock, and we need to make sure that that information, if we receive it, is kept in a bank and not kept here on our property.
Uh, here's a point, um, I know this is kind of being picky, but I get into this all the time. In a, give a report in a timely, timely fashion, that, I mean, how many days is a timely fashion? Just like A S A P.
You give a quarterly report, when you do the quarterly report, and the quarterly report, it will have, of course, investing in Georgia Fund One. That's, that's our investment tool right now, Georgia Fund One. And of course, it goes about saying, uh, conflict of interest on that, that's ten point seven. Uh, ten point eight is important, uh, because it states if you want to select a, a bank, basically you have to use the procurement process.
Um, I'm sorry, um, ten point six, um, where it says, the city administrator or his or her designated shall be responsible for the selection of a financial institution, uh, with approval of mayor and council for the purpose of.
So this basically goes back to, take you back to the selection of a bank on ten eight, basically you procure, so that's how you become a, a full facility there.
So the selection of the financial institution is covered where?
Under ten point eight, when you call that selection of a bank.
So they got the main mayor, with the approval of mayor and council at ten point six.
Yeah, when they do the procurement process, then they have to bring it back, you need to approve the process as you were.
Actually, I think that, um, ten point six, the execution of the written safekeeping agreement, that contractor had to come back to mayor and council for approval.
I know, but.
No, no, I'm just, I mean, that's.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is before that occurs, we should.
Take it back.
And fair enough, I was just, I'm sorry, this was, I'm reiterating the same thing you already said, that was, I was making a mistake myself.
Before that, that the mayor and council is aware of, um, financial institution.
If we put a bid out for financial services from, looking at changing our banking accounts or whatever, some from regions to whoever, we put a bid out, what you're saying is you want us to bring the bid, are you planning on putting the bid out? Or, uh, or you want to approve, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what, what, it, do you want us to come and advise you that we're putting the bid out, the, if we put the bid out, y'all want to pick, the, the, y'all want to be part of the selection, or is it like?
No, for the file approval, though.
Yeah, I mean, these contracts, yeah, just part of, part of, part of, part of.
And that is covered in ten point eight, is that what you're saying?
Ten point, yes, ma'am.
Is that the city of McDonald's?
All right, I just was confused, I'm sorry.
I mean, do you need some specific language in there that says?
Well, what about if they don't require a contract, like, what about, um, just for instance, we pay at Bank of America, where we just transferred some accounts into Bank of America, since we were already had accounts in deposit with them, they didn't require a contract to do it.
Yeah, when you open new accounts, they don't, there's a standing agreement that we have on file that's been approved by a resolution that authorized us to open accounts. So every time we open an account, we listen, and we get the signatures, and we have the city clerk to sign off on it as well. But the banking institution remains the same.
Right.
Right, but if we change banking institution, and we put a bid out, obviously we'll bring that to y'all to let y'all know, so with a new contractual requirement, at that point would be, we need to signature a memo.
Correct.
Um, which means that us to come before mayor council. So if we're moving all of our banking from, 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 Bank of America, we put a bid out, and Waco, Waco here, but Wells Fargo wins it. Um, at that point, we bring that to y'all to say, remove, you know, part of the bid, we put out for lead. Wells Fargo was the best response, they beat out, we got requirements from regions, heritage, and Wells Fargo was the one that provided the best service and the best cost. This is who we'd like to enter into, um, we need to sig- signature, and they obviously execute the contractual start. And then that, any accounts we open up, they, them, don't need y'all approval at that point, because we really have the most, the most approval at that point from the mayor. That's typically where we're in now.
It is, and so that was my question, so you got money at regions, which you've already previously approved at some point, and you're gonna take it out and put it in Bank of America, y'all, everybody's copacetic with that and don't want to know about it, that's fine, yes.
And any movement of funds from one account to the other will show your quarterly reports, for instance, when you get your S F L S report, and you hit, listen, and I'm just using hypothetical numbers here, and if you take money and you move it out of S F L S, and you put it into Bank of America, you're going to see the balance increase for Bank of America. Or if you take it and you put it in Georgia Fund One, you will see Georgia Fund One balance increase over what it was in the last one.
If it's ever ten thousand, it's come from us anyway, correct?
No, that's, when ten thousand is when you're talking about.
And I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with that at all, I just want to make sure that we're all, I mean, we're on the same page, so that they don't come back later and say, but that's all we know.
We did take steps, though, to, uh, consolidate the number of banks that we have, right, at some point, we took, because we used to have.
Nobody knew, we still have quite a few.
We still have some, that was something that was outstanding, when, 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 I mean, before Barney got here, and then Barney was, there was a directive for Mr. Backer and Barney, going to reduce the number of banks, that was reduced, but it still was still not reduced to the point where our current finance director feels similar, so that's something we're looking at.
And the reason you don't want to have a lot of different banks is because you have to pay fees. And those fees could be quite expensive if you don't maintain a certain level of revenues on a daily basis, and so if you have banks, if you have funds in all of these different banks, then you cannot have the same impact, and we've spent a lot, uh, quite a bit, uh, in banking fees. So we're definitely looking to consolidate.
Well, Leeta, I had a question relative to, to, uh, ten point seven, and just wondering if we need to add any additional protective language, because it says that uh, someone with a conflict of interest, uh, employees and investment officials who disclose to the city administrator any material interest, it just says that you have to disclose to them, do we need to have it in writing?
There's, Leeta, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think we need to disclose in writing, but there's also some additional guidelines that the state requires for your investment, so they have some guidelines as well.
Yeah, we, we have to get the, anytime, um, uh, they want to do business with the city, I mean, they have to submit that letter to us, which they have to approve, I mean, yes.
So can we put that compliance language there, because I don't want them to say, well, I told you when you were walking down the hallway, you know, just, just to make sure that that, that compliance language is there.
Just to be sure, they can't do business with us unless they do that, but there's no reason why we can't just, you know, cover ourselves doubly by putting that label under the policy.
Ten point nine, reports on deposits and investments. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking for a report to the city, city administrator, but, do we get, do we get that report, too?
Again, you get it, uh, Dr. Sear, I mean, what that is, is basically there's a statement, so if you want to come by and look at the statements, that's fine, I mean, just tell me what you need on that, and we can turn it to you.
Well, I don't know if any of us even know all the banks, too. I don't think any of us are truly aware, so I'd be, ask that, that, and hoping to be definite.
Okay, so you want, so would you like a list of the banks?
That would, that would be helpful, just so we're aware. And, but I hope that you can get the list of banks way down.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, we have to jump down to grants, and, uh, basically, if you go to jump down to ten point two dash one, it says the city administrator is given authority without evidence to bring the matter before mayor and council to make an application for and accept grants that does not require funding from the city. If it requires funding from the city, then it requires the council approval, okay? Uh, eleven three, administration, uh, each department must notify the city clerk and the financial director upon acceptance of any grants. Uh, we should have copies of that. Uh, we should also be provided with a copy of the grant application, note of the game of the grant award, any financial requirement is scheduled, and, uh, the financial director and the city administration, administrator should also, uh, receive periodic reports on, on the grants and the funds available, as well as the clerk on any reports that submitted to the county administration.
Shouldn't that just be, uh, all right, um, once we have a way, we can be able to, uh, spreadsheet with her, with all of that?
Well, and I'll give you an example of, well, when you just saw that action, the, the, the reporting document is to be used for the L C I, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
For the S F L S budget, is typically will be used for L C I grants, uh, where we see what we said, so in our incidents, you can see where, where it was going, um.
Okay.
And the, the reason this is important is that, uh, department is near prior for grants, and city clerk, the city administrator, and financial director should always know what grants are out there, what the compliance requirements are, and when we do a single audit provision, we have to provide a list of these grants, show what was paid, and, so, that's important for us to have that information.
And can I give you an example of a grant technically that doesn't have a fee, um, community choices through the L C I? Um, that's, they come and they provide a study, they'll do an overnight district review, they'll do design guidelines for you, there's no fee attached to that. Uh, you just have to be in L C I community.
Right.
Um, and we took fully granted to that in, in Griffin, and I think we've done it here, um, I think at least one time, we think we've done the community choices here. Um, but that's a, that's, that's a grant that doesn't come with any money, that comes out of the city's coffers. Um, and typically what they like for is just a signature of the elected officials, which at that point, we bring it to y'all again, sorry, but that's a grant that doesn't require any money, so I'm off of the city, they come in and they do the work, and give us a wonderful study, and then walk out the city and give us a, a nice document, and we can then adopt.
And, and I will tell you that, um, if you're going to seek foundation funding, what you're going to say they want to look at is the, uh, grant history, you know that, she's got that big smile on her face, she knows that. So we do need to be able, you do need to have that all capsulized and right where it is and what, uh.
The next item is your fixed assets, I won't spend a lot of time, just to know that a fixed asset, uh, for our definition is a useful life greater than a year, and thresholds has to be more than five thousand dollars, repair, repair, uh, supplies are not considered fixed assets. If it's an improvement that's going to extend a life, then that's included, that's considered a, a fixed asset. The department heads are ultimately responsible for recording the acquisitions, the transfer, disposal of all fixed assets. Uh, they need to notify the financial director, and we report them within thirty calendar days. Uh, the fair, for donated assets, we record them at fair market value. And twelve point four dash three, construction and process schedule. And the reason you want that is you need to know what that overall cost is, that's from the time you design, land acquisition, uh, to construction, and then you keep up with those costs, and you transfer those costs over to your fixed assets once it's completed. When you're doing fund accounting, you typically expense those each year, so each year you will not, each year when you look at your financials, you're not going to see what the total cost is, you have to keep your construction and progress schedules to keep up with the total cost.
When you say until completed, is that, the C O's issue?
Yes, that's, that's when it's, it's completed.
Once completed, you may, uh, open it.
We're typically waiting till it's, it's, it's available for use, and typically that's when you get your C O. Okay, uh, let's see, let's see, transfer of assets. We have to, when you sell, there's some state requirements for benefit, uh, who's also, plus you cannot, uh, dispose of them or just give them away unless it's to nonprofit organization, not a nonprofit organization, you have to realize they can, you have to have an economic advantage of when you sell that, so when you're selling, you need to be in that, that transaction, and you have to follow the state guidelines and federal guidelines, because when you have a grant, there are federal guidelines when you dispose of an asset. So we talked about all of those, and then the last one is compliance of state record retention, which is twelve point nine. Uh, the state does have, uh, guidelines of what the documents should retain, and how you should control those documents. So we're saying that we need to do some compliance with those.
Okay, very detailed, a lot of work. We need to pad out on the eighteenth to, uh, to adopt these, something to change, I think, that you have, and unless some of the council members subsequent tonight, I will be to call you about any particular item, but, uh, but this is, uh, something I know you've been working on for some time.
Yeah, I mean, can we adopt them now?
Well, we, we suggest the changes be made, though.
I mean, we, we always adopt things subject to change.
I think we all, we discuss first, and we adopt second.
I'm sorry, Ma'am, I didn't hear what you said.
We discuss first, ma'am, and then we adopt at a later date, so my process is, uh, if you come back, make these modifications, and then adopt it on the eighteenth.
Mayor, my only, my only point is, we, and this is where it becomes problematic. Lee has captured what the changes are, none of them were, were, were major changes,
I understand that.
and one of the things that keeps getting put out in the public is that we're not adopting a financial policy, and we just keep pushing it back, and pushing it back, and pushing it back.
Well, my recommendation is the eighteenth, unless the council provides an otherwise, it'll be the eighteenth. Okay, thank you so much, ma'am.
Well, I'd like to move to approve, based on, move to approve with stated changes on this evening.
I think I've got all the changes, Sandra, I have to get with Roger, and you, and Fred, and anybody else who made them, I think I've got them all. I was trying to write them down diligently and compare notes with Frederick the entire time to make sure I was giving them, we were going. I think we've got them all, I mean, I.
I would prefer it late.
My only concern is.
You got, you got a motion for, we'll get, do we have a second, folks? Okay, no second motion, die, okay, that's been all of it, and if you would, Lee, go ahead and, and make these suggested changes, and then on the eighteenth, uh, unless some of the council members have additional information, I, I'd find us totally unbusinessable to do that without having a filing document.
We would get a copy before the eighteenth?
We do, we're all.
Yeah, absolutely, and I would just, please ask if you, the notes that you have tonight, if you could just forward those to me, so I can compare them against.
The only thing that I, I want to say, and I just saw the transparency to the public, I mean, there have been so many communications via email about pushing us back, and I just don't feel like it's fair to staff to continually put in the public that we don't have these policies, and we've been trying to get this, this policy passed for months, so.
Out of record, thank you so much. We had, uh, let's take thirteen, fourteen, region soon, and, and let's move on, yes?
Uh, yes, ma'am, um, I'm DM Pocket, uh, number thirteen, um, we're bringing a kind of our progress, I have a report, let's pull up to you.
Thank you.
Uh, as the mayor's to man council retreat, uh, list of items y'all wanted, uh, us to work on over the course of the, of the calendar year, fiscal year, because we need our retreats in January, um, let me see if I can pull this up on the system, so everybody. Let me see if I can pull this up on the system, so everybody can see it a little clearer, um.
Red, did the colors ring any better?
Say, yes.
Did they look different colored?
Yes, yes, and then I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, the colors, basically, the red colors denote that that's something that's been completed, and as you can tell, some of this stuff will be ongoing, um, ongoing projects.
I can do this. Yes, I can do it.
Yeah, sorry. It, 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 and it's very far, just because, uh, and I apologize, what, what I'll do next time, we'll do an, an update in a couple of months. I'm, I'm a landscape, but you'll have more pages, but it'll be bigger, and I do apologize for that, uh, council and myself.
Okay.
It's the red that I get ready for.
Okay, the reason I was trying to find a way to, so y'all will know what's been completed versus what's outstanding. Um, I'll change that format the next time we do an update for you, uh, and change it so it'll be a little bit more visible. But we have a list of about fifty-one, fifty-two things that, that you guys asked us to work on over the course of the year. Uh, and I will tell you, it was funny, I remember that with Mercy Group last week, and, uh, and I told them we had fifty-one stuff, and he looked at us and said, we've got to pay that down some way, uh, that number's just exhaustive. Um, but we've always managed to get somewhere over ninety percent of these things done over the last two years I've been here. So we've been pretty successful in getting them complete. There are some things, obviously, that come with funding restrictions that we can't yet done, uh, because we didn't put it as part of the budget process, because of funding restrictions. There are some that require us to work with other governments, and that's not important to them, but we're seeing one of those being, one of the, I think, was been an issue since I've been here, probably before I got here, was the issue of the ambulance at the fire station. Well, you know, we tried to address that as part of the SPOS, um, twenty twelve, we tried to address that with, 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 um, during the SPOS committee with the chief, I brought that up. Um, in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen with the county fire chief, and he said, they don't have the resources to do it, and then when we did our own estimates, I don't know where's the fire chief working. Um, you know, the cost is really expensive to, to mind a, a, a truck, a fire, a ambulance at the fire station on our own dime. Very expensive, because you have to have the shift, because you just can't have one person, you have to have a shift and replacing that group on a shift basis, so it's three, you're talking about three to six people to rotate out in, in order to keep an ambulance service there on a twenty-four hour basis, if we fund it. Um, I know there was some negotiations with the county on that deal, and that's been outstanding, and they don't seem to want to move on it. Uh, change, we were talking about the issue of the ambulance at the fire station fifty-one, fifty-two.
Yes, sir.
That outstanding agreement with the county that they haven't come up on, it's still on our list and probably continue to be on the list, but.
Well, it's been on the list since, uh, two thousand, when we, before we actually constructed, and then two thousand one building was built for that purpose.
But they never put it, they've never, they've never funded an ambulance at that, at our location.
That's correct.
Um, and right now, they're not looking to do it, uh, there's no moving by the county that addresses that. Um, so some of the things we've been working on, um, annual evaluations of our department heads, we've been doing that. We started the weekly reports, and then we, we basically said, let's look at another format, and we were trying to come up with a monthly format that's suitable to capture all of our information, and still working on that. Um, attorney preparers, ordinance amendments, and transfers for budget limit, we adopted that policy already, so that's completed. Uh, comprehensive communication plan, we have a draft one available, and I know that was, was something that, uh, Councilman Vincent was pushing for us to look at, and uh, sent over a draft copy of her, uh, a couple of days ago to look at, to see if she can give us some feedback, and I'll send that out to everybody, um, tomorrow. Um, it's about six pages. Um, zoning, uh, senior zoning ordinance, I've been researching that and working on that. Um, and actually now, we, we got our consultants on board, and I asked them to kind of see if they could give us some examples of some good ones that we can use. Um, and pushed that ahead of, so I'll be meeting with them tomorrow to, to get up to speed on, on how fast they can get us a couple of drafts, so I could submit to y'all, and y'all keep the rules, and then bring back what you think is a good, a good one to look at. Um, LCI Street State, that's one is, has been pushed by, that was one that Mr. Chief was supposed to do for us, and the hard reason I've been trying to catch up with that project, so as soon as he feels comfortable, we'll bring that to y'all before.